Good evening, everyone. We'll begin this evening's meeting as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silence, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd ask our guests to please stand and join me in a moment of silence, which can be used by those in attendance for personal reflection, prayer, or meditation. This begins our moment of silence. And that concludes our moment of silence. If you'd remain standing, I'd now like to introduce Ashley Williams, the Associate Principal from Carver Elementary School, who will come forward to introduce the students who will be leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ashley Williams, the Associate Principal at Carver Elementary. I have the pleasure of introducing a few outstanding students and staff members tonight. Joining me, I have Felicia Nicholson, 5th grade teacher and SCA sponsor, and Danielle Perry, our school counselor. And our students representing Carver tonight, we have Lilly Unowitz, our SCA president, Autumn Jones, our SCA vice president, McKenna Wagner, our SCA treasurer, and Tyler Brookley, our SCA secretary.
(Pleading) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. We're going to take a few moments to greet our guests who joined us for the pledge, and then we'll be joining you in the audience for our next item, which is the performance highlight.
parents, and guests. My name is Christopher Mosley. I'm the Education Specialist for Performing Arts. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce for our performance highlight this evening the Hermitage High School Chamber Ensemble, under the direction of Ms. Lizzie Williamson. Ms. Williamson has taught in Henrico County for 14 years. This is her second year at Hermitage High School, and she is also the Core Director at Holman Middle School. She is looking forward to bridging the gap of middle school music experience to the high school through a variety of musical collaborations. Trying to see if we have their principal in attendance, Dr. Jackson. Okay, we want to recognize him in his absence anyway. Dr. Jackson, the Principal of Hermitage High School. So now, after we plug in a couple of chords, we'll welcome them to the stage. Thank you.
Nothing can harm you, my words will warm and calm you. Bless me, dear freedom, let daylight dry your tears. I'm here with you, beside you, to guard you and to guide you. Say you love me everywhere in moments, turn my head with talk of summer time. Say you'll be deep with you now and always. Promise me that all you say is true. That's all I ask of you. Let me be your shelter, bless me, be your light, your safe. No one will find you, your fears are far behind you. And you will always be beside me, to hold me and to guide me. And say you'll share with me one love, one lifetime. Let me reach you from your solitude. Say you'll be deep with you here beside you. Anywhere you go, let me go too. That's all I ask of you. Say no word if I will harm you. Share every day with me, try each morning. Say you love me. Oh, are you? Love me, that's all I ask of you. Anywhere you go, let me go too. Love me, that's all I ask of you.
Jesus, Jesus, don't leave me.
Thank you once again to our performers from Hermitage. It's certainly a pleasure at each of our monthly meetings to have the opportunity to hear from the talented ensembles from all across the school division. So thank you, Hermitage, for being with us this evening. Our next item is for an opportunity to recognize those persons recently appointed to administrative positions, and I believe we have one individual to be introduced.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues, and guests, tonight is my privilege and honor to introduce the new Principal of Highland Springs A.C. Center, Dr. Emily Loving. Dr. Loving earned her Bachelor's of Science degree in Technology Education from Virginia Tech in 2003. In 2010, she earned her Master's degree in Curriculum Instruction from Virginia Tech, and in 2013, she earned her Administration and Supervision Endorsement from University of Virginia. In 2019, she earned her Doctorate in Educational Leadership from Virginia Commonwealth University. Dr. Loving has taught in Hanover, Henrico, Surrey, and Chestfield, but she's coming home to Henrico. She has served as a teacher, instructional technology integrator, instructional specialist for science, and most recently led STEM and Secondary Science Team as the Specialist in Chestfield. She is also an adjunct professor for University of Richmond and John Tyler Community College. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Emily Loving as Principal of Highland Springs A.C. Center.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to be a part of the Henrico family again. I'm excited to be back, honored to lead this amazing faculty at the A.C. Center of Highland Springs. I brought with me tonight my husband Chip, our two kids, Russell, you gonna wave, and Avery, he's here, my mom and dad, and some close colleagues of mine as well. So thank you again.
I know you all join me in welcoming our newest member of the administrative team. And for the next item, I have a special presentation for you under the operations heading, and this is a presentation from some students at Deep Run who participate in the CIT program there, who want to share some experiences about their summer technology internship. So they are going to join us, and I know you can see we've got one special guest joining us virtually this evening from Deep Run. And you'll understand why he's joining us virtually in this way in just a moment, once you hear from our students. So I will turn it over to them.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, Dr. Cashwell, and guests. I'm Brian Maddox. I'm the Director of Technology for Henrico County Public Schools, and tonight we have three exceptionally bright students from Deep Run High School that participated in the Technology Department's 2019 Summer Internship Program. Over the years, many students have enjoyed the internship experience and learning that comes with being on a team working on real-world technology issues and challenges. These experiences include everything from web development, software development, database design, cybersecurity, to project management, requirements gathering, and stakeholder engagement. The program continues to grow and flourish, and I attribute the success of the program and its participating students to Wendy Martin, who is here tonight. Wendy works diligently every year on the preparation and planning for the summer internship, which encompasses in-person interviews in the very beginning to final closure of the interns' projects. Wendy is highly engaged in challenging and supporting each summer intern to have a meaningful and memorable learning experience. The work that Jacob, Jackson, and Ken performed this past summer was of very high quality and very valuable to HCPS Technology and the Division. They worked with other departments, such as innovative teaching and learning, to explore and offer the unique perspectives of how to improve student-led learning in the classroom for the classroom of tomorrow, for example. I appreciate the opportunity tonight for these exceptional students to have to share with you and guests an overview and highlights of their experiences. And with that, I'll hand it over to Wendy, Jacob, Jackson, and Ken.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, and guests. My name is Wendy Martin, as Brian just said, and I'm the Data Integration Manager for Henrico Schools Technology Department. Since the summer of 2014, the Technology Department has hosted a summer internship program that provides students a deeper learning opportunity. The goal of our program is to allow students a real-world work experience in diagnosing and delivering solutions to real user problems. Tonight, standing next to me are three 12th grade students from Deep Run High School who participated in the summer internship program of 2019. Dr. Brian Fellows, as everyone can see, is on the robot. He's the Principal of Deep Run High School, and he's joining us as well. So due to other obligations within his schedule, Dr. Fellows could not be here in person with us tonight, but he's here now through the use of the double-robot technology, and we're just very happy to have that opportunity and that tool for us to use. Brian, did you want to say a few words? Let me move this over a little bit. Wait a minute, let me turn up his volume. Go ahead, Brian.
Good evening, everybody.
Whoa, wait a minute, we're gonna raise you up a little bit, just so you're a little bit taller. You seemed kind of short. I'm used to that, but you're not. All right, so go ahead.
All right, good evening, everybody. I look forward to hearing Ken and Jacob and Jackson's presentation here in a few moments to learn what they did over the summer, and I'm happy to be able to be at the meeting tonight. I'm actually at Deep Run right now. We have a play tonight, so shameless plug, if you don't have any plans on Friday or Saturday, come up to Deep Run to watch Little Shop of Horrors at 7:00.
Oh, man. Thank you, Brian. So I'm going to allow the students to introduce themselves, and they're going to share a brief overview of their experiences while participating in our program this summer. They're going to highlight three areas where they were tasked with research and testing, as well as evaluating and designing. So, gentlemen?
Hello, my name is Jackson Dyke.
Hello, my name is Ken McCawa.
Hi, my name is Jacob Albright.
And I believe I speak on behalf of all of us when I say that this internship opportunity provided us with a real-life work experience with expectations, goals, requirements, and deadlines. We would like to showcase three areas in particular in which we were assigned tasks to complete over the summer.
Hello, my name is Jacob. Ken and I began our internship by researching multi-factor authentication solutions for the staff --
Sorry, guys.
For the staff of Henrico County schools. For those of you who don't know, multi-factor authentication is a security feature that verifies the identity of someone logging in using another device. Think about Apple sending a text to your phone when logging into your Apple ID from a new device.
With employees in Henrico County varying in terms of what devices they can access, Jacob and I found that a hybrid solution of software keys and hardware keys would be the best fit. Most employees with access to a smartphone would use a software key or temporary code sent to your phone, while employees without access would use a hardware key or a physical key that could be plugged into a computer. This would be handled by software such as Duo or Ping ID that offer options to manage multiple user levels and authentication methods under one umbrella.
So while Ken and Jacob did most of the research into multi-factor authentication, I did a lot of research into endpoint protection. So essentially, endpoints are the devices that are used to transmit signals through the network, so it's obvious that the county would want these to be secure. So the three types of software that I came up with solutions for were attack prevention software, which is essentially just antivirus, patch management systems, which make sure all the software on the endpoint is up to date, and data loss prevention software to make sure that critical data on the endpoints isn't lost.
For classrooms of tomorrow, Ken, Jackson, and I first researched and curated a list of 25 of the most useful Google Chrome extensions for the students of Henrico County. Categorized by appropriate age level, general subject cost, and other factors, we carefully handpicked the 25 extensions that we thought would best provide students with an intuitive and seamless learning environment.
Additionally, we were tasked to evaluate the current platforms used to create student portfolios, as well as finding alternatives. For each platform, we created sample portfolios and documented the functions, work process, and pros and cons to each platform.
We also created several training modules for features related to the computers and technology. We were given old modules that had several flaws. They were missing info we thought was necessary, and oftentimes, they were needlessly lengthy. So we cut them down and added the needed info. We were also given new topics for modules that didn't exist, and in total, we created nine different student training modules.
One of our later projects was a task of a redesign for the HCPS Operational Technology website. We faced a variety of obstacles that made this difficult, which contributed to the real-world learning experience, one of which was the WordPress platform that hosts a website was experiencing an upgrade due in August, which gave us intermittent access to the website. We enjoyed this project because it gave us an opportunity to research other websites, select a layout, design icons, and contribute to the overall look and feel of the website.
We additionally researched and conducted real-world tests with the new double-robot. As you can see, we had some fun with the robot around the office, but after extensive testing around the office, we began exploring what real-world applications this robot was capable of. For example, Mr. Maddox was unable to participate in our visit to the central office, but he was able to virtually Skype in with the double-robot and take the tour with us. We then researched other use cases the robot could be used in. At Henrico County, we like to honor those of academic and extracurricular excellence, including those who have already graduated, like alumni. If an alumni being honored was out of state, the double-robot could be used to attend the ceremony and recognize their academic or extracurricular achievement. Additionally, students unable to attend a class or school event could remotely dial in to participate.
So are there any questions?
Members of the board, are there any questions? How about some for Dr. Fellows?
And I would say, for those in the audience, I don't know, Dr. Fellows, how well you are at controlling your device, if you can turn so that the audience can see that you're there. He's actually driving this from a laptop in his office, just as a student who might be home ill and be on homebound could participate in their classroom activity virtually in this way. So you imagine if you were typically going to be in a science class at 9:00 a.m., and you might be home with an extended illness or unable to participate, you could potentially participate virtually this way and actually participate and drive the machine to see what the group was working on. So it's pretty neat, and we are so appreciative of the information that these students brought forth related to this solution, but so many others.
Very good.
So thank you all.
Yeah, I just will join, on behalf of the whole board, I'll tell you how impressive it is and how much we appreciate the staff's work and coordinating with you, and then your great work over the summer. So thank you so much. I do want to know if Dr. Fellows is, are you wearing pajamas under there? Are you sure you got on your suit pants? Dr. Fellows and I, his children play baseball together, so I'm taking liberties with him. And also, you can't do anything about it, right? Roll out of the room. Well, thank y'all very much for that.
Thank you again to our presenters, our students. We appreciate it. And we're also appreciative that our folks in technology take on interns in this way. So thank you, Mr. Maddox, to you and to all of your team who hosted this amazing experience for our students. And so that concludes that item. And for the next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I am pleased to share highlights from the past month in Henrico County Public Schools. So if you would, direct your attentions to the screen, and you will see the ceremonial first steps towards the new Tucker and Highland Springs High Schools, and how students are applying their learning to everyday life, and a special moment for our youngest learners, though we're not sure who had more fun, the kids or the adults.
Plenty of activity in our schools this November, as teachers and students continue their commitment to the Henrico learner profile.
And I put the list of needs that you guys need.
Let's start with Fair Oaks Elementary, where first graders were working in groups to create habitats for a wide variety of animals. Collaboration was also a piece of the lesson at Echo Lake. Students designed homes for Native American tribes, focusing on what would best survive in their local environment. It was a colorful science lesson at Gaton Elementary. 5th grade students used popular products in their experiments as they determined density. Kindergarteners at Seven Pines joined the Antiques Roadshow. Experts came in to explain how unfamiliar items from yesteryear were used in everyday life.
Can you say it with me? Tithrider.
At Fairfield Middle, math class had a reality check when 8th graders created shopping budgets while taking advantage of coupons and specials. As an algebra challenge, Freeman students were dividing radical numbers and later worked in groups to determine the best process for doing so. At Highland Springs, students were also challenging their thinking process. Using clues from Edgar Allan Poe's "Tell-Tale Heart," students had to solve the mystery of a breakout box. Students and parents from all over the county gathered at College and Career Night, featuring schools and employers from around the region, the state, and even the nation. There were groundbreaking ceremonies for new high schools at both Tucker and Highland Springs. Cheerleaders, marching bands, and numerous county leaders gathered to celebrate these transformative projects. Many schools celebrated Veterans Day with musical performances and patriotic messages, including this program at Ratcliffe Elementary. On a lighter note, the central office had the privilege of welcoming New Bridge Learning Center preschoolers for Halloween. The kids weren't the only ones in costume. Staff joined in the fun as they handed out trees. At Holman Middle, Joan Hodges celebrated her birthday and her 25th year of teaching by giving books as gifts to all the students. In a partnership with VCU, grad students from the Richmond Teachers Residency Program shared lessons with teachers and students. These RAMS are future exceptional education teachers for Henrico County. And finally, no fall is complete without a celebration of music. The all-county Middle School Chorus entertained a packed house with their talents.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you can see it's been a busy month, and that concludes items from me for now.
Well, thank you very much. Mrs. Cox, would you read our mission statement to begin our meeting?
Absolutely. Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the public forum. This is a time where citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Some citizens have signed up in advance with the school board clerk, and we will follow that list first, and then anyone else who wishes to speak will be allowed to do so and will come to the podium after we complete the list. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone, including state your name, your neighborhood, or school affiliation. Once you've finished speaking, we ask that you write your name and contact information on a form that's off to the side of the podium or the lectern, and check the box if you wish to be contacted by staff regarding your concerns. To assist you in tracking your time, there's a timekeeping system on the podium. Speakers will have a four-minute time limit. The light will be green as you begin your remarks. The yellow light means that you have one minute remaining, and we ask that you The yellow light means that you have one minute remaining, and we ask that you stop speaking when the light turns red out of respect for the other speakers' time. The school board is here tonight to hear from you, the community. Speakers should direct their comments to the board. We will not be responding directly to speakers, and we appreciate your attendance this evening and providing your input for this very important function. So I have a list of speakers, and I will tell you that there are 24 folks signed up. So while you have four minutes, and you're welcome to use them, you're also welcome to not use all four minutes if you would like, but you certainly have that opportunity to do so. So what I'm going to do to help us is I'm going to call the first person's name, and then I'll call the second person's name to be on deck and just ask them to move to the front. So first up in the batting order is Lou Ross, and Lou will be followed by Avis Thomas. So Lou, come on down, and Avis Thomas, if you would come find your own deck circle, that'd be great. Please state your name.
Thank you. Lou Ross, I live in Church Run. In case you guys haven't heard, there's a redistricting going on. I'm in front of you guys tonight because surveys and feedback forms don't allow you guys to see the faces of the people you're affecting. Our neighborhood is being moved in both maps to Tukuyakason from Pocahontas, which is a school we can walk to. In fact, Henrico is currently building a sidewalk that leads directly to our neighborhood from Pocahontas. Our neighborhood is in the precinct that votes at Pocahontas, where we walk to vote for our representative. Your maps take our neighborhood and three other small streets and say, we're close enough to walk to Pocahontas and close enough to vote there, but not close enough to go to school there. Feedback forms aren't going to show you. My eighth-grade son, who one day this fall wanted to go support his friends at a football game, at the school football game, and didn't have a ride, so he walked in less than 10 minutes. So these are the things that are being taken away from our kids. I want to talk about safety, even though that's not on the RFP for this redistricting. Your maps move our neighborhood from Godwin, which is 1.7 miles away, and a route that goes through only three intersections, to Tucker, which is over three times further and has a route that goes through nine intersections. I brought the 2018 Henrico County traffic count report. Pump Road in front of Godwin had 11,000 vehicles counted during the 24-hour time period. How many cars passed on Param Road in front of Tucker? 50,000. That's five times the volume. More cars were on Param Road around Tucker than any other measured location in the entire Henrico County. It was three times more the count than the cars on North Gaten at Broad Street. A feedback form isn't going to show you my wife as she watches the map on her phone when my son drives to school for the first time, and she's hoping that that little blue dot arrives at the school. And we didn't buy into one of the new developments. We bought because we bought into a neighborhood that's established. If you guys didn't know, the number of kids being added to the high school enrollment numbers for the new development in the current Godwin zone is two. Two kids. So if companies like HH Hunt and Revkey, they want to develop in the county, that's great. I'm all for growth, but if they're going to build and establish parts of the county and there isn't room in the schools, they either need to find somewhere else or make them pony up the money to expand the schools. It's time to stop yo-yoing longstanding communities like Church Run, Pine Dell Farms, Cross Keys, Rain Tree, and I think you said 24. You'll probably hear from them tonight. These are you guys' maps. Cropper GIS, they're leaving in May. They're going back to Ohio. The redistricting committee, some of them don't even have kids in the school system. These guys belong to you guys that we elect to represent us and do what's best for our children. But for more than just me and my family, I'm going to offer two suggestions. One, minimize the change, especially in the areas that aren't changing. In case you guys weren't aware, the two high school maps that were selected move the most number of kids of all the drafts that they had. And second, most importantly, take control of the situation, fix these common sense issues. You guys live here, you guys are in charge of this. Stop pulling neighborhoods from schools where they can walk to. Stop breaking up communities. Stop disregarding our students' safety by sending them halfway across the county just to affect income levels, graduation rates, or whatever. In the end, this is about the kids. This is a great county. I went to school here, but these maps unnecessarily impact thousands of students and defy logic. So I think we can do better, and we're looking to you guys to fix it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Avis Thomas, followed by Dr. Curtis Brandon. I don't see Avis Thomas or Dr. Brandon, Curtis Brandon, if you're here. The next speaker will be Claire Patrick. Is Claire here? Thank you. And Claire will be, Ms. Patrick, will be followed by Heather Walker. So just so we're clear, I called Avis Thomas. I don't think I saw her. Dr. Curtis Brandon, I don't think I saw him, and so I believe Ms. Patrick is here now.
Are we allowed to provide informational packets?
You can certainly provide it to the clerk. Thank you. Please begin.
Good evening. My name is Claire Patrick. I live in Lake Lorraine, and I have a seventh grader at Pocahontas Middle School. I am 0.51 miles from Godwin, and I have been redistricted. I am here tonight to vigorously oppose both options, A and B. I'm going to begin with a personal story. In 2012, my daughter entered kindergarten. Based on school districts at that time, as well as redistricting that had already been decided for 2013, I had been told that she would start elementary school at Jackson Davis, but move to Short Pump Elementary for first grade and beyond. Even though there were no less than six elementary schools in closer proximity to my house than Jackson Davis, I thought nothing of it. Jackson Davis had a great reputation, and I was sure that my daughter would receive quality instruction, and that proved correct. Jackson Davis was an excellent school. That said, I soon realized that schools are more than mere vessels of education. They are community cornerstones, institutions that bring families together, engage nearby business and nonprofit partners, and build on the strength of surrounding neighborhoods to provide a variety of social opportunities and supports for our kids. And in this latter regard, Jackson Davis did not meet our needs, solely because we did not live near that school, nor see our Lake Lorraine neighbors at that school. We never bumped into classmates at the grocery store, or saw them at our neighborhood pool, or played with them in the kid's zone at our local Y. And likewise, because my very own neighborhood had been split, when we went into our neighborhood picnics or ice cream socials, we didn't recognize the kids there either. Because even though we lived in Lake Lorraine, we didn't attend the same public school as all the other children in Lake Lorraine. We were neither here nor there, separated from our school community by distance, and alienated from the very neighborhood we chose to be part of because our kids attended different public schools. According to the HCPS website, as well as the presentation led by GIS Consulting last night, "The purpose of redistricting was to more efficiently address school capacity as well as reduce concentrations of poverty. Reasonable goals by all accounts." This was to be done, however, and I quote, "under the guiding principle of balancing a community or neighborhood-school concept. Both options split my neighborhood and fail to adequately consider proximity as a natural extension of the community-neighborhood-school concept. And I know firsthand that in dividing a neighborhood, the fundamental building block of what makes a community is ruptured. As this process has exposed, splitting neighborhoods does not balance community. On the contrary, it fuels confusion, leaving neighbors to wonder which side of the new school border they will reside. It sows division. And as some neighborhood sites and Facebook accounts attest, it has inflamed acrimony among neighbors to a degree that I never imagined possible merely two weeks ago. I believe that both options presented were poorly conceived, failed to meet all the county's stated criteria, and sow unnaturally redraw and splinter neighborhood boundaries that it looks more like educational gerrymandering than community balancing."
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Our next speaker is Heather Walker, and Ms. Walker will be followed by Bill Oggmody. Bill Oggmody. So please state your name and begin.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Cashwell, members of the school board, and any members-elect who may be here this evening. My name is Heather Walker. I spoke last week as well, or last month as well. I live in Greenwood Glen, the Greenwood Glen subdivision, and as I mentioned last month, my sons currently attend Greenwood Elementary School. I'm also a 21-year veteran teacher in a neighboring public school system with experience at both the middle school and high school levels. Thank you for allowing us to speak this evening again. I have two issues that I would like to focus on today. The first is a great concern that I have for the timing of the redistricting decision. While the desire to make it transparent is regularly expressed, it does not feel that way to me in any aspect other than the printed maps and the option to observe committee meetings, which I'm regularly doing. It seems to me that there are many new moving parts in this decision. Last month, you all announced that a new elementary school will be built. Yay! And in addition, will be added to a middle school. It seems that those two things would have a considerable effect on the decisions moving forward. In addition to that, it seems unreasonable to me that the school board members recently elected have enough time to truly know their schools and their constituents. They're starting a four-year term. It's unrealistic and unfair to ask them to be adequately informed to make a conscious and independent decision in just four months on a topic that will directly affect the vast majority of Henrico's youngest citizens. Many of us ask that you really take a look at the timing. Put it on hold for a year. Putting it on hold for a year would allow ample time for new neighborhoods to grow a bit so that more accurate student numbers are available, and give the decision-makers time to truly talk with the stakeholders involved. It would put community first and become much more transparent. I imagine that the contract with Cropper was made with the school board's approval, and I would also imagine that with this new information, the agreement could be suspended for a time period. My second concern is one that comes from my experience as a teacher and is grounded in the idea of adding students to Brooklyn Middle School in response to overcrowding. No one argues that having a 15-to-1 student-teacher ratio in mainstream classes is ideal, but in a public school system this large, it is not realistic for every school. Simply put, what is fair is not equal. Schools that are functioning well and have large class sizes are really okay to stay that way for the immediate future. Schools that are struggling and have large class sizes should not. We need to put more adults in struggling schools like Brooklyn, not more students. They need more teachers, counselors, teaching assistants, mentors. Students who live in low socioeconomic households need more support than those who don't. Their parents are often working at night and can't sit with them to help them with homework or daily struggles. We owe it to them as a community and as a county to fill those gaps for those kids. They deserve to find the same wings as every other student in Henrico County. Please encourage Mr. Cropper to draw a map that supports and educates the students who are in the classrooms today rather than bringing more students into the mix. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oggmody will be followed by Erika Tucker.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for your service. Having served as the regional workforce chairman for the last four years in Henrico County as the fiscal agent, I kind of get what you do, and I appreciate your time and energy after hours from your day jobs. I'm especially happy to see the chairman in his role. Having taken us through this process 10 years ago, you are uniquely qualified to help us navigate this. I reviewed the comments from 10 years ago. Echoed today are the same comments from 10 years ago. Don't split my neighborhood. Don't make me drive too far from my schools. Keep me as close as possible. Keep my community intact. They're out there on the internet. They're your minutes. They're your notes. In speaking to the committee members in the last two map review sessions, they were unaware that we can move 222 high school students and 95 middle school students and keep every school in the county at 94% of capacity or less. 300 students versus 3,000 students that they're currently proposing. I'm not an expert on all the projections on growth and all that sort of stuff. I get that. There are some pockets that have to be looked at, but we are literally moving 3,000 students when we can move 300. And that's not acceptable to move 3,000. They are, according to them, limited by the options given to them by Cropper GIS. They have other ideas that they are not allowed to put forward, and they are only strapped into the six options, and now down to the two provided to them. I will remind this board that 10 years ago, Cropper GPS GIS sent forward to you all maps that the board set aside and went back and redrew on their own because the citizens did not want them. And yet, here we are with him as a consultant again, and I suspect we'll wind up in the same place. I'm asking the board tonight to directly and publicly tell the consultant and the CRC to first and foremost abide by the Henrico County objectives and procedural guidelines for the establishment of school attendant zones revised May 2015. Those should be our goals and our guidelines, and that should be first and foremost. I'd also ask that the board add to the four stated goals, the goal of moving the least number of students and disrupting the fewest number of families. I think that's reasonable. And finally, I'd ask that the board force rank and wait the four currently published goals so that the CRC can clearly understand what your goals and objectives are. They are confused. Come to the meetings, talk to them. They do not know what it is you want them to accomplish. They need your help and guidance. In my discussion with the CRC members, they have told me they are lacking resources and data and the ability to think outside of the box. They are unsure of which of your goals they're trying to accomplish. That's frustrating for them. My neighbors serve on those committees. They're frustrated. I will be at the work sessions. I hope you will too. Talk to them. Ask them what they need to get this job done. In my impression, from what I've seen, Cropper GIS has predetermined some of these outcomes. And that's not okay. The whole idea of having the CRC is to have the community's input so that we get to determine our schools, not somebody from out of state who has a very poor reputation.
Thank you, sir. Special for your kind comments at the beginning. You'll be followed by Erica Tucker, and then Todd Springer is on deck. Is Ms. Tucker here? And Mr. Springer, Todd Springer, will be followed by Kerry Jernigan. Next on the list is Timothy Mulvaney. All right, I believe that Todd Springer maybe, is that, are you coming forward? Todd is next, and then you'll be after him, sir. Thank you. And if I skipped you, I'm so sorry.
Kerry.
Okay, we'll get back in order here. So Todd is up, then Kerry. So thank you. You're up now.
I have some information.
Yep, if you'll share that with the clerk, so make sure to get it to us.
Okay, where's the timer?
If you folks want to have a seat, you can, or you can stand. It doesn't matter. You can move over here to the front row. Okay, good. Thank you. Please state your name, since I got everybody all jumbled up.
Hi, I'm Todd Springer. I live in Oak Run. My daughter goes to Pocahontas Middle School. We're next to Church Run. Les spoke earlier. Right now, you got a proposed boundary down the middle of our community and recreation center. That's a natural boundary, I guess. I got 30 years of experience in transportation and master's in civil engineering. I'm a professional engineer. I've worked in safety operations detours. I'm currently working with the Attorney General on bridge hits, compensation, and so on from insurance company. In my handout, I'm giving you Virginia State Law 8VA 207160. It requires that when changes occur, you are to review routes for safety and efficiency. And I've also handed you a federal guideline number 17, which has an extremely strong statement on safety being one of the, well, the highest priority with the safety of pupils as it relates to transportation. So this should be a top priority. It actually should be in your guidelines next to efficiency. You should have safety in there. When I met with some of the community members at the public information sessions, they told me that they've been advised that Broad Street is a hard boundary. told me that they've been advised that Broad Street is a hard boundary. And so -- and this led to their selection of the public information session options. So I work in this field. I looked at distance from catchment areas, traffic volumes, intersections, interchanges, accidents, direction of rush hour traffic. All of this should be reviewed as part of it. It should be made publicly available to us for our review. I asked for a summary of issues in your current bus network. Actually, my neighbor did, and they said nothing's available. So go figure. And there's nothing to be made available to the public. We asked for what transportation told the committee members. They said there's nothing available. I can forward those emails to you if you'd like. That's not transparency. So in the handout, I'll email it to you later. I work at VDOT, and I'm not representing myself here as someone from VDOT. But I gave you the traffic volumes on all the streets. I also gave you the accident clusters throughout the west half of the county. I reviewed those. The new routes are going to be less safe and less efficient. In my particular area, you have North Gate and Road going across Broad Street and Pump Road across Broad Street, and those apparently, I heard, are no-gos. So now you're going to push a large community through the Gaskins Road, Three-Tropped Road, 64 interchange, which actually has higher traffic volumes than those two intersections. Also, when you go north across North Gate and Road, you're on two-lane roads all the way to Deep Run High School in the opposite direction of traffic. You're moving this entire community around Pocahontas and Godwin High School now with traffic to both Tucker High School as well as to Quiacason. It makes absolutely no sense. So anyway, what I am requesting is a formal review of the bus routes as they currently are. You're required by -- well, you're not required, but the staff at the school is -- you can request a summary of those issues or a report, and I would argue that that should be done as part of this redistricting. I'd also ask that the transportation issue summary of the current situation be made available as well as a review of the bus routes. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to make sure I didn't miss anyone. I called Erica Tucker, but I don't believe she came forward. So if you'd introduce yourself and begin, that'd be fine.
Yes, okay. All right. So good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Jernigan, and I am from Britton's Hill Farm neighborhood, which is within the Brooklyn District. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk with you tonight. So for those who are not familiar with our neighborhood, we are located adjacent to I-64 at the intersection of Staples Mill and Bethlehem. Our neighborhood is a unique three-street residential neighborhood surrounded entirely by industrial and commercial neighbors. We formed the Britton's Hill Farm School Coalition that represents our 80 households with many school-aged children. Currently, we are assigned to Johnson Elementary, Tuckahoe Middle, and Tucker High School. We are actively pursuing concerns regarding school redistricting. Our mission is to work towards achieving an assigned school pathway, which includes Crestview Elementary, Tuckahoe Middle, and Freeman High. One of our key reasons for this assigned pathway is for the safety of our students. Transportation to school from our neighborhood should not include interstate travel. Our requested assigned school pathway avoids main arteries for transportation to school. Second, another key reason for the requested assigned school pathway is for our students to build and maintain social networks throughout their school years. With the majority of the Tuckahoe Middle School students going to Freeman High School, we feel that the requested assigned school pathway delivers consistency during critical chapters of student development. We currently have several of our school-aged children already assigned to a variance with Crestview due to West Hampton Day School attendance or due to them moving to our neighborhood and keeping that variance. So we ask that the school board and redistricting committee evaluate key reasons for our neighborhood to be assigned to Crestview Elementary, Tuckahoe Middle School, and Freeman High School, and we look forward to talking with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next speaker is Mr. Mulvaney, followed by Steve Glissman. Steve Glissman will be on deck. Please come.
Hello. My name is Tim Mulvaney. Thank you for the time and effort you put in in behalf of us and our children. When I signed up to speak, I thought I was coming to speak on behalf of Kingsley and Canterbury neighborhoods to comment on the redistricting process. However, after spending a good time last night at the comment session at Godwin, I realize now I'm speaking for most of your constituents. They expressed many of the same concerns our neighborhoods have. One of the county redistricting guidelines states, "Efforts will be made to establish walking schools and reasonable walking zones." What is clear from the comments last night is that that guideline and several other guidelines about respecting geography and major streets as boundaries were given much less emphasis than in the past. The two maps that are currently in draft form and out for comment are taking the local out of local schools. Please allow me to use my family and neighborhood as an example. After considering schools, 17 years ago, my wife and I bought a house in the Kingsley neighborhood. We now have two daughters who are freshmen at Godwin and walk home from school. I also have a daughter in middle school at Quiacason. Five of the original six plan maps had the Kingsley neighborhood zoned for Godwin. I believe that was true for four or five of the Canterbury maps. Then, after going through the first part of this process, two maps were put out for consideration, and zero were zoned for Godwin. It makes no sense. When the maps were drawn, common sense resulted in Kingsley and Canterbury at Godwin 83% of the time, just like they have been for the 40 years of Godwin's existence. The committee then applied other non-local factors, and the answer was 0%. Again, it makes no sense. Yesterday morning, I drove to Freeman. I went through 10 traffic lights. I had to cross Gaskins Road. I had to cross Param Road. Those are supposed to be considered boundaries by the county's own guidelines. To drive to Godwin, I passed through one traffic light. If I put this on a piece of paper and asked 100 people, I'm pretty sure all 100 would agree which school was the local school. For every child in Kingsley and Canterbury, it is much more costly in money as well as the children's time to bus them to Freeman than to Godwin. And then there's public safety. Do you really want redistricting to result in new 16- and 17-year-old drivers going through 10 times the number of stoplights? I hope that none of the countless accidents that will no doubt occur result in a death. To illustrate the point, Kingsley and Canterbury walked to school last night. We also wore T-shirts that said, "We can hear the band." Yes, from our neighborhoods, you can hear the Godwin Band. You can hear the announcer call out, "First down, Godwin." Admittedly, not nearly enough, but you can hear it. To me, that's the very definition of a local school. I know there is much of this process that is still to run. However, I believe it would be prudent for you, as the five individuals who have to vote for or against whatever this process produces, to remind those who are operating the process of the county's existing guidelines, to remind that you and your constituents expect that the process will retain local schools, and that by all means, if you can hear the band from the school, you ought to be districted there. There are going to be happy and unhappy people in any redistricting process. However, at the end of the day, the final maps have to make sense to most folks for the process to have validity. The two current high school options fail this basic common sense test. In my opinion, it is because the existing guidelines that the county has published were not given due consideration. On behalf of the Kingsley and Canterbury neighborhoods and lots of others, I thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Steve Glissman, followed by Robert Wilhelm.
Thank you to the board for taking the time to hear us this evening. My name is Steve Glissman. I'm a resident of the Covered Bridge neighborhood. My daughter attends Short Pump Elementary School. This probably not be a surprise to you. I'm here to discuss redistricting and my concerns that I have with that. Since 1983, Godwin has been the high school of my home, which was built in 1983. The entire time it's been in existence, Godwin's been the school. Our current attendance zone has us in Short Pump, Elementary, Pocahontas, and Godwin. In each of the new two options, Pocahontas and Godwin have been replaced with Quiacason and Tucker. So wanted to use the questions on the survey to kind of outline some of my concerns I have during this. Regarding the feeder pattern, under the current attendance zones, my daughter's schools, she would be with the same students from elementary to middle school to high school. Under the new options, she would be divided at middle school. Her friends would go to two different schools. Pardon me. From elementary to middle school, she would go to two different schools. And then from middle school to high school, her friends would be divided to three different schools. So this change needlessly is disruptive and also breaks up friendships and relationships at very key points in my daughter's life. Finally, just to focus on some other concerns I have regarding neighborhood and transportation. Presently, we're a mile away from Godwin. Tucker is five miles away. This change is unsafe. It sends teenage drivers and school buses five miles away to travel, also placing them on interstate. And it also undermines the idea of a local school. Just this past Monday, one of my neighbor's high school student walked to school. Half an hour later, he came knocking on my door, had a different shirt on. He had forgotten that he had a Veterans Day concert that day. He wanted to know if I could give him a ride back to school. Having a neighborhood school, you're able to do something like it. When you're a mile away, you can help your neighbors. You can help your friends. When you're five miles away, you can't do that. So I would just ask the board to please use common sense and to listen to the taxpayers during this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilhelm is our next speaker, followed by Sheila Crandall-Green.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I appreciate all the work you guys are doing. My name is Robert Wilhelm, and I am here representing Cedar Chase and Church Road Glen. We're very small neighborhoods. You could probably fit all of our schoolchildren into my minivan that's parked in the parking lot right now. We seem to always be thrust into the last couple redistricting options. We're always thrust into something, I think, because we're kind of a forgotten little soul out there. If you're not familiar with where we are, we are across the street from the church-run pool, and I'm here tonight to say that I'm against both options because it doesn't take into consideration, like most of these people have all said, the safety issue about busing. One of the things that if you're busing our community to Tucker, the kids are going to be on the bus longer. That's less time in classrooms. It's less sleep they're getting. It's less time with family. Also, it's going to increase the cost to the county because you're going to have higher gas costs, higher maintenance costs on the buses. You're going to have to change tires more often. So there's a cost involved there. I would also like to piggyback on a lot of these comments. We can hear the Godwin Band from our front yard as well. And in fact, Godwin and Pocahontas, my children, both of my children currently go to Pocahontas. My son is in eighth grade, and Godwin has this unique, I think, but awesome relationship with Pocahontas that eighth graders in the advanced band can be members of the Godwin Marching Band. So you're an eighth grader, and you get to meet all these great people in the band. You get to meet the band director. So my son did that. So next year, he's going to be in marching band, and then you're going to tell him that now you had a great time there. You've been with these guys for two years, but we want to send you to a different school. Currently, he bikes to Pocahontas sometimes. I don't think anybody in this room wants him biking down Gaskins Road at 8:00 in the morning. I don't know if they have helmets that size that could repair the damage that might happen. So what I'm saying is, just like everybody else is saying, so you're getting this for the 50th time now, but just take a look at the maps and make sure that communities that are currently going to a school continue to go to the school that's closest, most convenient, so that we're keeping that neighborhood, the neighborhood feel of the school intact. My children went to Short Pump Elementary. 100% of Short Pump Elementary goes to Pocahontas, and currently, 100% of Pocahontas goes to Godwin. Under some of these maps, you're basically taking a third of Pocahontas and taking them to Tucker and putting them with children and families that I don't know. I don't, like somebody said tonight, I don't see them at the same grocery stores. I don't see them at the Shady Grove Y. It's not that I don't, that I wouldn't become friends with them, but there's so limited amount of hours in our days. I think you guys know this. How much longer do you -- you're probably saying, how much longer do we have to be here listening to the same stuff over and over again? But--
Nobody should that.
Nobody should. But like again, I just, please take a look at the maps. I know you guys will. I know you're doing your best you can, and I really appreciate, like somebody said, nobody, you're not going to please everybody, but instead of making 99 people mad and one person happy, let's maybe make one person mad and 99 people happy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. And we do appreciate that. I was only joking. And that we listen to every one of the comments, and I said in the work session also that all of the email comments and all, eventually, we will end up with a binder that's as thick as it needs to be, that everyone will be printed out, and we'll have an opportunity to review each and every one of those in addition to what you shared tonight. So please continue to share. Our next speaker is Sheila Green, Sheila Crandall-Green. And if she's not here, then our next speaker is Katrina Walsh. Ms. Walsh, Katrina Walsh, if you'd come forward. Thank you. And Ms. Walsh will be followed by Robert Bowers. Is Mr. Bowers here? And I'll go ahead and call the next one, then George Fleming. Go ahead, ma'am. You're up. You're up. Yes, please.
Thank you, everyone, for staying late this evening and for your time and dedication. Over and over, in the comments and emails that you're receiving and a huge packet of information that I've read all of, we are hearing citizens ask, "Why are we moving farther away?" Or, "Why, when I can walk here, are we moving farther away?" Or, "Why are we going somewhere where there's more intersections?" And what I hear in these comments is increased transportation safety risk. And I hope you hear that also. I say that because I have worked for more than 20 years with local, state, and federal officials examining transportation safety and security. And I recently served as a subject matter expert for the Department of Homeland Security's Transportation Sector Security Risk Awareness, and those wards get bogged down. But what I'm saying is that as a subject matter expert and having worked with Department of Homeland Security specifically in transportation sector and served on the National Academy of Sciences Transportation Research Board, I can say that there is a significant gap in the RFP and in the highlighted county redistricting criteria, to use the word "efficient" and not "safety," is a very significant gap. And I hope that you will consider addressing this gap. And when officials and decision-makers knowingly know about a gap and avoid addressing that gap, we put our students at risk. We put them at significant increased transportation safety risk. So what we're talking about in terms of those four areas of risk that many people are addressing, and I didn't say earlier, but I am Lou Ross's neighbor in Church Run, but I'm not speaking just from that perspective. I'm really speaking from my work with local, state, and federal officials and best practices. And when we look at gaps, we really need to fill this major gap. If Henrico County could be one of the communities in the country that brings safety, transportation safety as a paramount in the redistricting process, when we have the data available, thanks to Todd Springer, he has given you some of the data, you have the data available and at your fingertips, we can inform consultants with the traffic data. We're looking at increased distances, increased high-volume routes, increased intersections, increased rates of speed for bus routes, for car drivers, and for young teenage new drivers. Those four areas should all be examined, and we have the data to look at and to inform our consultants and to inform decision-makers. When we have that gap and we don't use the data that we have, the county isn't following what are best practices in transportation safety. We aren't following best practices in emergency management. And we owe that to all of our children, your children and mine, and everyone's children in this room. Thank you very much for your time.
Your name's Ms. Walsh?
Yes, that's right. Thank you. Thank you.
Please state your name, and then I'll call the next speaker. Please state your name, and then I'll call the next speaker.
Sure, it's David Fleming.
All right, Mr. Fleming. And Mr. Fleming will be followed by Madison Maguire, Madison Maguire.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is David Fleming. My family and I live in McCabe's Grant. It is a section of the Lake Lorraine community. Our daughter is currently a sophomore at Godwin High School, and our son graduated from Godwin last year. Though our daughter will be grandfathered in at Godwin, we are very concerned about the probable negative effect of proposed redistricting on our neighbors and our community. One of the current redistricting options divides our neighborhood, sending half to Tucker and half to Godwin. Both options move our children from Pocahontas Middle to another middle school ranked 300 spots below Pocahontas. We heard from Mr. Cropper with Cropper GIS last night that emotional comments were not helpful, and that helpful comments should be based in data, statistics, or comments about the process. I would like to first say that this comment is an obvious indicator of how detached those guiding this process are from reality. Heeding the consultant's recommendation, I will focus the remainder of my comments on data, statistics, and process concerns. I would like to begin by calling your attention to several comments made by Mr. Cropper at last night's event at Godwin High School. We learned that the members of the redistricting committee who were selected to represent our communities were vetted and chosen by Cropper GIS and not our elected school board members. In my opinion, this is analogous to choosing your own jury. This immediately disconnects decision-making from those we have elected to represent us. Second, Mr. Cropper indicated that his consulting firm had worked with our neighborhood experts to develop the current redistricting options and had taken into account their personal knowledge of our neighborhoods. The presented options split numerous neighborhoods and shift thousands of students. Why would our volunteer experts agree to such community division if their input had truly been considered and integrated? Lastly, I would agree that data and statistics are important. My family, they made a very unemotional decision to move to Short Pump 13 years ago. That decision was based on data and statistics provided by Henrico County Public Schools. Based on this data, we chose to move to Short Pump, choosing to have our children attend Short Pump Elementary, Pocahontas Middle, and Godwin High. We also chose to invest in the community by building a home. Our community is now being told that other data and other statistics are more important than those we used to make our choices. Now, other data and statistics are being used to tell us where our children should attend school. We should be rewarding people for choosing to invest in their community, their schools, and our children. I encourage you as school board members to research a redistricting project for New Hanover County and Wilmington, North Carolina, and the comments and reviews made about the process, which was led by Cropper GIS. Specifically, I would look at online reviews of the firm and related articles in the Wilmington Star News website. I would like to end my time by reading an email I received today from another concerned citizen who discovered I was speaking tonight. And the email begins. As we discussed last night at Godwin, I served as a committee member in the last HCPS redistricting project 10 years ago. I worked on the elementary committee, and a good friend worked on the middle school committee. Together, we shared our ideas, concerns, and after it was said and done, our frustrations. The process that Cropper GIS has going this time is the same as was orchestrated 10 years ago. After all of the time, energy, hours away from our families, stress, and hoopla, the county basically went with the initial maps that were presented to them by Cropper GIS. After our time on the HCPS redistricting committee, we believe it was all a sham.
Thank you, sir, for your time. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Madison Maguire, and she will be followed by Lindsay Shelton. Thank you.
Hi, I'm basically here to echo what everybody else is saying, but I'm Madison Maguire, and my family and I live in the Cedar Chase Damperhood, which is off of Church Road. Currently, Cedar Chase is zoned for Short Pump Elementary, Pocahontas Middle, Godwin High School. Both redistricting options changes our middle school from Pocahontas to Kwakasun and changes our high school from Godwin to Tucker. My husband and I have major concerns with this potential change. Our number one concern is safety. We live 1.3 miles from Godwin, which is a 20-minute walk and one stoplight away, while Tucker is 4.3 miles away, is not walkable, and can take up to 20 minutes due to heavy traffic. I was able to attend the presentation last night, and not once did anyone mention safety, the safety of our children. The safety of our children should be our utmost concern while we transport students across the county when they have a school practically at their back door. Our community children would have to wake up early, endure twice as long bus ride, and cross extremely busy intersections just to travel to school. When our children reach the age to drive, I would worry about the potential risk of accidents during rush hour to and from school. The options would be getting on 64 or driving Three Chop to Param, which is very, which are very heavily traveled roads. And the HCPS policy and regulations for redistricting states that major roads and natural boundaries will be used whenever feasible to define attendance zones. In the current options A and B, we are being separated by a small creek, a minor landform rather than a major street such as Three Chop Road, which is less than a fourth of a mile away. Another major concern is our children are being taken away from their natural community that they have grown up in, that being the pool they attend, church run, the ball fields they play at, Tuckahoe Little League, neither of which are associated with Kwakasun or Tucker. We are one of the few neighborhoods zoned for Short Pump that does not feed into Pocahontas and Godwin. It's hard enough adjusting to a new school without being ripped away from your friends or community. We are a small but very tight-knit community. Please consider keeping our neighborhoods together where they have been for many, many years.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker on the list is Lindsay Shelton. The next speaker after Ms. Shelton is Ashley Lewis. Ashley Lewis, then Alex Kurtz. Okay, no, come on. I think Ms. Lewis is coming, and then Mr. Kurtz, if you'd have a seat, we'll be ready to go with you next. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I spoke with you all last time we had the meeting. My name is Ashley Lewis, and I live in River Mill. I just want to touch base on some concerns that are still unchanged. Our communities, which would be River Mill, Magnolia Ridge, and Greenwood Glen, are close-knit with other surrounding Glen Allen communities. Therefore, we should not be removed from the schools slotted for Glen Allen residents. The county has the goal to decrease concentration levels of poverty in schools. They need to keep the students, or help the students from within. Same goes for the students who are struggling financially as well as academically. Adding more children to an already struggling population will not help, only drown out the problem. The principal of Brooklyn Middle School himself has stated that he needs more resources in his school to be successful. Another significant concern that I have since the last meeting is that there was a committee member, a secondary committee member, on social media that slandered my community. The comments that were made in the closed group called us racist, classless, and privileged when we are hard-working, middle-class residents. I'm personally very offended by those false accusations as we are very diverse and far from the statements that were made about us. How can we trust the objectivity of this process and the communities, and the committees, when a committee member slanders an entire neighborhood on Facebook based on words of one resident that we are not sure even said the statements? This must be more than just addressed. We cannot trust someone with these inaccurate, preconceived notions about us. There is a new proposal for an elementary school and an expansion of a middle school both in the Brooklyn District. This redistricting needs to be tabled, at least until the final decisions are made regarding those two proposed changes. If not, we will be here again sooner than we want to be because of that. Lastly, it is not a builder like Agent Hunt's responsibility to provide funding to the county to properly plan for schools in growing capacities, especially when there are several other builders such as Lifestyle Legault, Ryan Homes, Stanley Martin, and Boone Homes that are currently developing in the area. Henrico County has approved far more developments than the schools are equipped to sustain currently. The issue is poor planning on the county part, not the developers. Thank you.
Mr. Kurtz, and he will be followed by Becca Selligren, Selligren? Please begin, sir.
Hi, I'm Alex Kurtz. I live in the Kingsley and Canterbury subdivision. I'm actually currently a student, or junior, at Godwin High School, so hopefully I can give you like a real perspective of a student's look at the redistricting options and how it will affect our education, instead of obviously all these parents coming up, you know? No offense to all of y'all. No offense. But first of all, I'd like to say that personally, since I came to Godwin, I've walked home from Godwin over 100 times, well over 100 times, easily. And it's a great option because honestly, it's fast on the bus. So, just to put that into perspective, it helps you get home faster, and on top of that, it's a reliable option in order to get you home effectively so you can start on your homework, or if you have an after-school job, or extracurricular activities like clubs or anything like that, you don't have to worry about someone having to come pick you up or take you home. You can always rely on your own two feet. On top of that, I would like to make aware that obviously, as you can tell, Godwin is only like a mile away, and Freeman is actually instead four miles away. So, I mean, if you just put that into perspective, it kind of eliminates the walking option entirely, which it can limit a student's opportunity, educational opportunity, and inclusion in after-school activities greatly. Personally, I'm in theater, and it's really reliable because a lot of people from theater, and even my own friends, can give me rides home because I'm only like a five-minute drive away, you know? It's no hassle for them to go out of their way like it would be for Freeman students if they were, if I had, you know, friends that could take me home. Also, being able to walk to school, like events, like plays, or like sporting events, whatever it may be, that's a big social thing in high school, obviously, and it's a great way to get involved in your school spirit and getting to know a lot more people. I know personally, I went to the homecoming game, and I probably met 15 new people just alone in that game. It's a great way to make friends, and on top of that, it's just, everything that you can possibly do should be within like a walking distance, personally, from my opinion. And if it isn't, then you can take into consideration possibly redistricting them. But I know personally that about 10 years ago, my neighborhood was up for redistricting also, and they tried to redistrict us to Freeman. It didn't go through, obviously, and so I'm just, you know, sort of doing my own part to represent the students who are already in, are already at Godwin, and those who will be going to Godwin in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker was Becca Selligren, Selligren, followed by Simone Robinson.
Hi, my name is Becca Selligren. I'm not here to just represent the neighborhood that I live in or my children. My children are actually too young to go to school right now. I have a 16-month-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old. So, it's going to be a while before they are in schools. I'm here because I attended the meeting last night, and I spoke with a number of committee members. And I walked away from that meeting feeling concerned, not for my neighborhood, not for the surrounding neighborhoods, but for the entire county. One of the stated goals of Cropper GIS is to reduce concentrations of poverty in Henrico County with this redistricting process. One of the very first things that was said to us in the meeting was that economic information and statistics on different schools was not provided to the committee members. How can they possibly make informed decisions about reducing concentrations of poverty without that kind of information? Without this information, there can be some unintended consequences for schools, specifically when it concerns Title I funding. If a school is currently receiving Title I funding, and we change the population of that school so that it is no longer meeting that percentage, the funding will no longer be there. That means that the school itself will no longer be considered a Title I school, but those students are still in Henrico County. So how are they going to receive those services? I was very, very concerned that this information was not available at the very, very beginning of this process. This should have been something that, as Mr. Cropper said himself, that this information was guarded by the schools, which it's not. On a case-by-case basis, the students might be, the students' names and information, of course, that's never going to be revealed, but the population of a school, the economic population of a school, is available. The number of students who applied and receive free and reduced lunch is available, and that information should be shared so that the committee members can make informed decisions, so that we don't have the unintended consequences of our students losing funding, losing resources like Title I teachers and coaches in their schools. Another thing that I was concerned about, that I just want to bring to our attention, is the funding for middle schools, specifically Title I funding for middle schools, that we have one middle school currently that is getting Title I funding, and that's Wilder Middle School. But Kwakasun Middle School has a percentage of students between 40 and 50% that qualify for free and reduced lunch. But where is the funding going for them? Why aren't they receiving those services? That's a question that I would love to have answered, and I'll leave my information here as to why we don't have funding going to the school for them. I had a wonderful conversation with Christina Alsop this morning. She gave me 20 minutes of her time on the phone, which I know 20 minutes is a lot for her to talk to me and go through the process with me and show me how things are, how money is divided among the schools, and how that Title I funding gets to the students who need it the most. Where my concern is, is with Kwakasun Middle School and making sure that those students haven't been forgotten in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next speaker is Simone Robinson.
Hello, how are you? Members of the board, thank you so much for listening to my concerns this evening. I appreciate your time, and most of all, I appreciate your ear. I am a proud Henrico County teacher, but tonight I'm here as a proud parent of an eighth grader currently attending Pocahontas Middle School and who will attend Godwin in the fall of 2020. As the redistricting maps are currently proposed, he would then attend Tucker High School in 2021. That is much further than the 1-point mile, 1.1-mile walk my son and neighbors can make to their neighborhood school, Godwin. After last night's very busy gallery walk, I am actually quite confused after seeing the criteria. Major roads and natural boundaries, Gaskins Road and Deep Run Park both fit that bill. Minimized division of clearly identifiable community components, as you've no doubt already heard, that is not quite being honored. School bus efficiency, with all due respect, taking students who are less than two miles from their neighborhood school to a school nearly five minutes away, five miles, pardon me, away, doesn't seem very efficient. Walkable? Did I mention that my neighborhood is 1.1 miles away from Godwin? My son will be a driver in a few short years. He is, and I hope continues to be, an athlete. He won't be a bus rider after school. At Godwin, he'd walk home, 1.1 miles away. At Tucker, he'd have to wait for me to drive from Wilder Middle School, where I sometimes work very long hours to provide my students with an equitable education, or perhaps he'd have to catch a ride with another teenage driver. That five-mile drive should be enough to give anyone ajuda. One last point, if you will. It took me years to find a home to fit my needs. The first need on that list was quality schools. While I'm sure Tucker is fine, it is where I used to live, and I worked very hard to find something that I thought would fit the bill for my family. Godwin is indeed my neighborhood school. The Covered Bridge area is an established neighborhood. Godwin has been their neighborhood school, or our neighborhood school, since my home was built in 1981. I respectfully ask that you consider having it stay that way. Thank you.
So our next speaker is Gina Blackwell, who is on the list. After Ms. Blackwell is Sean Tulajack. I probably did very poorly with that. Okay. So you're after Ms. Blackwell.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me. I'm in the River Mill District. I was here last month. I was here last month to talk to you about keeping my kids in the same school that they're currently zoned for, but after doing some research, I realized that Henrico County has a redistricting problem. This will be the fourth time in 10 years that they have uprooted children from their friends, community, and schools. Henrico County needs to look to the future and pause its redistricting while they plan for the building and expansion of the new schools. If they don't, then we'll be here again in a couple of years, just like we were here in 2017, and 2012, and 2008. These stop-gap Band-Aid fixes are a waste of time, resources, and money. Let's determine where the new elementary school boundaries are going to be. Let's figure out which middle school is going to be expanded. Let's determine if there's going to be a new high school, if that needs to be built. Let's let the new school board, the new school board, get acclimated before they have to make these decisions. Please, let's do this right this time. Thank you.
So this is the last person on the list, but we did have one more person sign up tonight. Marlene Sherlock will also be, if you would come forward with Sherlock. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
My name is Sean Tullajack. I represent the Crestview Area Coalition. I am in Westwood, and I have a daughter that is right now in Tuckahoe and one that is in Crestview, and will both be hopefully attending Freeman soon. I'm the only voice probably you'll hear from Crestview tonight. We could have rolled out 100 red shirts like you probably saw last night at that meeting, but we thought it might be nice to just have one voice so you didn't have to hear the same thing over and over. First of all, hats off to my fellow citizens. I mean, really, they've nailed all the talking points. So I want to try to avoid most of those, but I want to speak to something that's bothering me about this, because Henrico is an amazing school institution. I mean, it's cutting-edge, it's diverse, and there's a passion with the students, the teachers, and the board. And I just hope that this board isn't the one that ruins that, or its successors, because you're on the path to do that if you are listening to Cropper and what they're trying to do. We saw the same thing try to happen 10 years ago, and they're stepping on the same neighborhoods again, and it's frustrating. And the first thing is Freeman. Freeman is a flagship school for this county. It is overwhelmed with diversity, and that's through the feeder program from Crestview. In Crestview, my daughters were at school with kids from over 40 countries that spoke 20 languages. I will cherish that experience they had for the rest of my life. And all of that goes into Freeman. And Freeman not only has all that diversity, but it's one of the best schools in the county. Why mess with that? I can't understand for the life of me why we would jeopardize such a great school by moving kids. My daughter, who will be 16, I guess, at the time, will be driving her car on the interstate to get to school. If that doesn't scare you, it should. I've seen her drive a Barbie Jeep, okay? Option A changes 3,795 kids, and option B, 5,137 kids. And one thing that I keep hearing is, well, we're not just looking at the numbers. Well, I hope not, because they're not numbers. They're children. Each child has relationships, friendships, routines that are so important to them. We all know that right now, our kids live in a different time. They're less secure than they used to be. These changes are a huge deal for them. So if we're not focusing on those numbers, our children, we should be. So let's start. And the process that I have seen as it's played out is frustrating. What I saw last night was downright scary. And I hope this board and the successor board spends more time looking at the effects that it's going to have on our children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Ms. Sherlock?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marlene Sherlock, and our family lives in the Greenwood, Hungry Creek, and Glen Allen school zones. We have two children, both at Hungry Creek. Tonight, I wanted to head straight for detailed facts, like the tsunami of cohorts just beginning in high school, the unrepresentative PTRs you saw in your work session this afternoon, and a CIP plan that changed a lot in a 24-hour period just two weeks ago. But with only four minutes, I realized what I really want is for you to hear how frustrated I am. Let's start with the membership numbers. You should have seen our daughters' faces when I showed them the pupil-teacher ratio for Hungry Creek, 19.7. I got the "you're crazy, mom" look, and if you have a teenager, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Of the 16 classes our kids are in, only one has a class size anywhere close to that. But that's the problem. PTR is not class size, and it doesn't tell what's really going on at the secondary level, especially in cool subjects like English, math, science, and social studies. At the creek, math and science classes routinely exceed 30, and our oldest English classroom doesn't even have enough spots for every student to sit at a regular desk. Wouldn't the minimum, maximum, average, and mean class size be much more meaningful than some overly genericized PTR? I challenge you tonight to go back and ask your staff to do more, give a bigger, wider picture of what our kids and our teachers are really experiencing. Finally, with enrollment ballooning our classrooms, more classrooms might be in order, so let's talk about the CIP. Is it a wish list or a serious plan of real needs? I believe it must be the former, since I understand it's tradition to show funding only for items in year one, yet two of the most notable, a new elementary school and a middle school expansion, show no funding at all. Just what led you to the decision two weeks ago to publicly announce, oh my goodness, we need a new school, and to move up the expansion of some unnamed middle school? I can't imagine what our redistricting committee members must have felt like. You threw them under the proverbial school bus. They'd just finished weeks of work, collectively spending hundreds of hours to select two options to show the public, and then you flew like a fairy godmother, suggesting two significant new wrinkles. At first, my fellow Gator, Cougar, and Jaguar neighbors were excited. A new school. They're finally listening to us. But it didn't take long for the anger and skepticism to set in. What took you so long? Were they really talking about our schools? And why just now? Did they not know, not care, or were you in denial? And finally, the biggest question of all, how and when is it going to be paid for? Could you at least try to come up with solutions other than sticking us all with a $40 million new school bill? Or, and, rezoning thousands of kids to schools we have no ties to? By the time a new school and an expansion is designed, funded, and built, the upcoming Big Four cohorts currently in the sixth through ninth grades will all but be gone, certainly from elementary and middle schools. You need a better long- and short-term plan. Show us your sincere, be more forthcoming. If you approve this CIP without some formal resolution to request yet another multi-hundred-million-dollar referendum, you're doing a big disservice to our county. What is it they say? A lack of planning on your part should not constitute a crisis on ours. This is Henrico. We're better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes the folks who have signed up in advance, but as I said, if there's anybody who is here and would like to speak, you certainly, now's the time to do so. And I see there are a couple, some come to the front, and we'll take you in order in which you arrive at the microphone. So go ahead, sir. Introduce yourself and any affiliation.
Great. Good evening. My name is Nathan Lash. I represent the part of the Crestview community, live in Monumental Floral Gardens.
Would you spell your last name?
Sure. It's Lash, L-A-S-H.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. You know, one of the things that I really focused on last night, and I've been a lot to these meetings and viewed lots of things, and Cropper GIS mentioned about the survey. I overheard a parent last night said that they filled out the survey 50 times. You know, I have a feeling that a lot of these surveys are box stuffed with people portraying themselves as other people. There's no way to track these people in these surveys. Everybody should have one voice and one comment. I think, you know, the committee members do need to look and evaluate the students in particular. You know, the safety is a big concern for our neighborhood, being that we are right at the end of, almost end of the city, in the Willa-Lawn area. Everybody within my community will be traveling on 64 to get to Tucker High School, hands down. You can't tell a teenager to take the slowest, longest route to get to high school. They're going to go the fastest, quickest route, which is going down Monument or Broad Street to Glen Side to 64, which in my, I travel that every morning, and it is a very treacherous and difficult path, and I would not want my 16-year-old on that road. Thank you very much.
Good evening. So I'm going to speak about redistricting, but I have a much different view. We can call it whatever we like, property value, safety, keeping communities together, et cetera. For one, I wish people cared so much about predominantly minority schools getting resources before there was a threat of them being affected. Like I said, this is nothing new. This is nothing more than allowing segregation, and the people are segregating themselves. The county is redlining and using the schools to do so. I hear people complaining a lot, but what we need to hear is honesty. I hear HCPS say redistricting would help diversify the schools. But let me tell you my story, because you've heard a lot. Last time my address, which lies in Fairfield, was redistricted, was the very last time. It was when Glen Allen was built. My address was redistricted to Brooklyn Middle and Hermitage High School. Henrico High is closer by just a little bit, but yet we went to Hermitage, because, once again, Glen Allen was built to keep the schools segregated. They pulled from us. Fast forward. Now, because of redistricting, again, the very next time around, we're being put back into Henrico High and Wilder Middle. Let me just add, I absolutely love both of those schools. That is not my problem. My youngest son actually goes to Wilder Middle, because their autism program I chose was a better fit for him than Brooklyn. My middle son goes to Brooklyn, my oldest goes to Hermitage. My issue is that we say it's for diversity, but now that we're pulling white and more affluent families into those schools, we're pushing out the black families that you literally put in there last time around. That's the very opposite of what you said you're trying to achieve. Like I said, enough is enough. People like to say we're one Henrico. We've never been one Henrico. And if you continue down this path, we never will be one Henrico. I also hear people talking about keeping communities together. Well, let me just add, there's nothing wrong with broadening horizons, building new relationships, because once these kids graduate high school, they go to college. They're not going to college with these same people that they've been in elementary and middle and high school with. I hear people say, we live one mile from this school, this school will be four or five miles from my house. Hermitage is 4.6 miles from my house. Henrico High is 4.1. If it's good for one side of the county, it's good for the other. I am sick and tired of the East being treated one way and the West being treated another. So like I said, if you want one Henrico, then I advise that you do it. You can start by telling some people no. You have enough practice, because you tell black parents no all the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, sorry if you didn't introduce yourself.
Hey. My name is Jeff Britt. I live in the Pine Dell Farms neighborhood along the Pemberton Corridor. I didn't plan to speak tonight, but felt compelled to after hearing so many other folks speak about redistricting. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of more than 500 people that have signed a petition to keep the Pemberton Corridor at Freeman High School. We wish to preserve the feeder pattern that was created just 10 years ago during the last redistricting. At that time, the school board voted to move students from one side of the road that went to Tuckahoe Middle, together with kids on the other side of the road that went to then Byrd, now Cuyacason Middle. The school board also voted at that time to move students from Godwin High School on one side of Pemberton Road to Freeman High School with kids on the other side. So for the first time, the Pemberton Corridor was brought together to go to Cuyacason and We support preserving the community the Pemberton Corridor has established at Cuyacason and at Freeman High School. We support protecting the continuity of education and the relationships many students and families have developed along the Pemberton Corridor. If option A or B are approved, this would be the third high school for the Pemberton Corridor in 10 years. We oppose options A and B. If forced to move to Tucker, which is what's on the table right now, many along the Pemberton Corridor will now have two schools outside of our voting magisterial district. We live in the Tuckahoe District. Our elementary school in Pine Dell Farms is Jackson Davis, fantastic school. My wife teaches there. That's in the three-chop district. Tucker is also in the three-chop district. That's a problem for me voting for school board members that don't necessarily represent the schools, the majority of schools where my children attend. Freeman is a little over a mile from my house. Tucker is about three miles away, with no sidewalks and crossing 64. Our kids can walk to Freeman. My son's a freshman at Freeman, and he and his buddies walk home all the time. Looking at enrollment, county data show that enrollment is actually trending down at Freeman and up at Tucker. So what's the rationale for pulling the Pemberton Corridor out of Freeman if enrollment is trending down in all scenarios? Both options pull more than 300 students from Tucker and shift them to Hermitage, Glen Allen, and Deep Run. Why are we moving Tucker students out if the goal is to feed Tucker? Options A and B pull more than 140 students from Godwin to Freeman. If Freeman is already at 100% utilization, according to county data, why are we adding more kids to Freeman just to push the Pemberton Corridor out? There are only 140 high school-age kids along the Pemberton Corridor. This is far less than the number of students being moved from Tucker to Glen Allen and Hermitage. It's about the same number of students being pulled from Godwin into Freeman, speaking to the folks from Canterbury and Kingsley who want to stay at Godwin. Well, we want to stay at Freeman. Henrico County data also shows these two options impact thousands of students in the West End just to fill the additional 40-some seats at the new Tucker. Every effort should be made to limit unnecessary impacts to students, and the maps endorsed by the committee fail to limit student impacts and arbitrarily move school boundaries with very little regard for established communities or existing feeder patterns. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name's David Ballenger.
Spell your last name, please.
B-A-L-L-E-N-G-E-R.
Okay.
I live in the Britton's Hill Farms neighborhood. One of my neighbors spoke a little bit earlier. I was also one who was not going to speak tonight, but was moved like the last speaker after something that I heard, and it has to do with the consultant. At the very first presentation that he gave, I actually was able to ask him a quick question, and I was asked, my question to him was, what is the population data based on? And he said, it's, well, it's based on current enrollment and 2010 census data. And I understand there's probably some data out there that he uses to project those populations out, hopefully to now, but I'm thinking about the next 10 years. And so it struck me when someone asked him a question or a comment was made, and they were asked to keep the, you know, the comments to facts and not emotions and these things. I asked him what he was doing specifically to make sure that his data was valid, because he's using 10-year-old data, and he's about to make all of these decisions based on 10-year-old data for the next 10 years. And so I find it very ironic that he had the audacity to tell someone to keep their comments to facts and data, when, to me, it's not even clear that his data is valid and factual. So I don't know, after hearing tonight, that this, you know, this consultant being used again, as was 10 years ago, I don't know if that's, you know, the feelings about him or his services are an indictment of him, or if they're an indictment of you guys for retaining him again. And I would make that as a comment, and then as a request, both for you guys and for myself, I would like to see what variables he's using to make any sort of projections that he's using based on these lines that apparently everyone feels have already been set. And so, you know, as a professional economist and statistician myself, I understand that these things are difficult to work with. You do the best with what you have. But, guys, we're a year away from brand-new data. We're taking a census next year. And so I'm kind of curious as to why that was not considered in terms of this timeline. So given that, but, you know, and that we've got stuff coming up, I would like and estimates are being used in terms of the recommendations that he's making. And that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Okay, maybe last but not least, but it'll be short and simple. I am with the Crestview Area Coalition. My name is Melinda Winterhalter.
Spell that first, please.
Yes, always.
Okay, thank you.
One of our major concerns at Crestview is being pulled out of Freeman. When we are, give the most diversity to Freeman, Crestview Elementary has a free lunch percentage of 43%. Freeman High School is at 27% free lunches. That's mainly due to Crestview Elementary feeding into there. Tucker High School is already at 42%, 42.6% free lunches. So putting, pulling Crestview out of Freeman makes it much less diverse. The people you want to put into Freeman from Godwin, they don't want to come to Freeman. And honestly, I think that their statistics from their elementary schools help diversify Freeman, I mean, diversify Godwin. So that is just something that's supposed to be in your criteria, and we love Crestview, the different cultures, the different languages. As a matter of fact, when we were spreading word about the meetings, the flyers we handed out had Spanish on them as well. We're not going to have great numbers of people show up because we have so many parents that don't speak English. They don't even know what's going on. So it's just going to be the core group of us, and we get good numbers out. But, you know, socioeconomics from Crestview, we can't go out and come all in the same gear to these meetings or anything like that. That tells you how diverse our school is. Freeman needs that. Period. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there others? Well, let me say thank you to all of you on behalf of my colleagues. Thank you for coming out tonight. I will also tell you, while none of us having comments tonight on any specific matters or substance, as far as the process goes, I do want everyone to know, someone mentioned that they felt like the surveys might not be being considered or something of that nature. And they are, as I said earlier, all of the content, all of the comments, both here and through the committee and otherwise, and once this comes back to the school board, are shared and considered. And the consultant and the school officials and the committee are constantly receiving updated information tonight at the work session, or this afternoon at the work session. We got updated projections because those are set as of the, once school begins, and so that information will be shared as well. The projections are done annually based on not just census and data, but also the actual number of kids that are attending school and so forth. So everybody's working really hard to have good data and make as good a decision as possible. But we also recognize, as more than one speaker said, is there's a real firm chance that somebody's not going to be pleased with the outcome, and we recognize that as well. But we greatly value the fact that you're here to speak on behalf of your communities and on behalf of your individual students, and so everything that you said will be given great weight by everyone. So thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our business, but you're also welcome to head to your homes if you'd like. So with that, let me get back to our agenda.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the next item, I am requesting your approval for proposed revisions to policy P-6-09-014 Crisis Plans and Threat Assessment Procedures as we reviewed previously.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead.
That's all right. That's all right, Madam Superintendent. It was my fault. I was searching for my agenda to work from. So again, we finished the public forum, and we appreciate that. Before we move to those items that you're going to propose for us tonight, the next item is approval of the minutes. Members of the board, you've had the minutes and had an opportunity to review them, make any suggestions. Is there a motion? We approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Reverend Cooper and seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Now, Madam Superintendent.
All right. Yes, as I too hastily said before, I am looking for your approval for proposed revisions to policy P-6-09-014 Crisis Plans and Threat Assessment Procedures.
Yes, and thank you very much. And this was presented at the work session. Members of the board, is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation for approval of revisions to policy P-6-09-014 Crisis Plans and Threat Assessment Procedures? Yes, and thank you very much. And this was presented at the work session. Members of the board, is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation for approval of revisions to policy P-6-09-014 Crisis Plans and Threat Assessment Procedures?
Is that moved?
Moved by Mrs. Cock. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. The policy revision is adopted.
Thank you. Next, I'm seeking your approval, or acceptance, rather, of the Richmond Roadrunners Club and Metropolitan Richmond Sports Backers Grant Award of $100 to support the running program at Dunbarton Elementary School.
Thank you, members of the board. Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to accept the Richmond Roadrunner Club Metropolitan Richmond Sports Backers Grant Award as she presented?
Say that three times in a row. So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Cock. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The grant's accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm seeking your acceptance of the Virginia First Grant Award of $682.50 from Capital One.
Thank you, members of the board. Is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation for acceptance of the Virginia First Grant Award?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Augmire. Is there a second?
Second.
By Reverend Cooper and others. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. The grant's accepted.
Thank you. Next, I'm seeking your acceptance of $9,833.34 in funding from Halifax County Public Schools via the High School Program Innovation Planning Grant from the Virginia Department of Education for the purposes of that grant.
Thank you, members of the board. Is there a motion to accept the grant funding from Halifax County Public Schools via the High School Program Innovation Planning Grant?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Augmire. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Thanks. And finally, I'm seeking your acceptance of the National School Lunch Equipment Assistance Grant Award of $26,828 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Thank you, members of the board. Is there a motion to accept the National School Lunch Equipment Assistance Grant?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next items are operations.
Yes, and the next item is related to seeking your approval for the fiscal year 2020, 2021 to 2024, 2025 Capital Improvement Plan.
Members of the board, we've had this and reviewed it a number of times, had an opportunity to ask questions and make adjustments, and we all recognize that this is a document that will have some adjustments made as we go forward. But is there a motion to approve the 2021 to 20, beg your pardon, is there a motion to approve the 2020-21 to FY 2024-25 Capital Improvement Plan?
Is that moved?
Moved by Mrs. Augmire. Is there a second?
Come on, people.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. We've got a plan to work from, so. And I would just point out, I should have pointed this out earlier, that the Capital Improvement Plan is funded on a year-to-year basis because that's how county governments work, and you can't fund a program, you can't fund beyond the year in which you're in. So it has funding for the upcoming year only approved. So thank you. Next item, please.
That concludes.
I believe you got another pick over.
Sorry. Oh, yes. I apologize.
It's okay.
We're all sort of bleary on the, yes, and I have it here and I missed it, and you're helping me out. Seeking your approval of the Pupil Transportation Employee Appointments and Releases.
All right. So members of the board, is there a motion to approve the Pupil Transportation Employee?
It's a consent item. And personnel. So we can take the other one in a block, which I didn't read because it's a consent item.
Go ahead, please.
So if you would also, while you're considering approval for that, also consider approval of the personnel items, and that finalizes the items for consent in that block.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for getting sloppy. So, members of the board, we have two consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent items as presented?
So moved.
All right. Moved by Mrs. Cock. Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Augmire. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. And that does conclude items from the superintendent.
All right.
Thank you for your positions.